Good morning Birmingham. This is the regular meeting of the Birmingham City Council. Today is Tuesday, June 3rd, 2025. This morning, our invocation will be delivered by J.J. Johnson, Chaplain for the Jefferson County Sheriff's Department, and the Pledge of Allegiance will be led by myself. If you're willing and able, please stand.
Let us pray. Father, we do come this morning to give thanks, thanking you, Lord, for all that you've done, all that you're doing right now. And because, Lord, we know not who we are, but whose we are, we praise you in advance for what you're about to do. We ask today, Lord, that you continue to bless us, keep us, guide our hearts and our minds, that we stay focused on our assignment. We thank you now, Lord, for all of the leaders of our city, the city of Birmingham. We ask, Lord, to protect their families, keep them in your care. Lord, we need you ever so much to continue to bless this city so that we can move forward. So, Lord, we want to say to you today, we love you, we magnify you, and we glorify you. We ask now, Lord, that today be a special day in this city, that everything goes right. And, Lord, for this, we'll be careful always as you're taking care of all of our officers, our first responders, and all of those, that make sure this city is run perfectly. Our mayor and everyone else in leadership, keep them in your care. These blessings, we ask in thy name, as all the children of God, sit together. Amen.
Good morning, Mr. Clerk. Could we please have the roll call?
Councilmember Abbott.
President.
Councilmember Clark. Councilmember Moore. Councilmember Smithman.
Morning.
Morning, Councilmember Tate.
President.
Morning, Councilmember Williams.
Morning.
Morning, Councilmember Woods. Morning, Council President Pro Tim Alexander. Council President O'Quinn.
President. Um, council, we have before us the minutes of the meetings for February 4th, 11th, 18th, and the 25th of 2025. If there's no additions or corrections.
Okay, all in favor, they'd be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, they may...
Those minutes are approved. The minutes are not ready for the March 3rd, 2025 through May 27th, 2025 meetings. This time, we'll have communications from Mayor Woodfin.
Mr. President, good morning. Good morning to the entire council. Good to see you all, and good morning to the general public, those who are here in the council chambers, as well as those listening online. I want to begin with an update related to the Roebuck neighborhood as it relates to their household garbage and recycling pickup services. Beginning next Monday, June 9th, the household garbage recycling pickup services for Roebuck residents will change from Monday to Thursday. Again, the change for those residents will be, will not, will no longer be Monday. Their new pickup date will be Thursdays. Uh, this change is designed to increase efficiency and customer service based on, uh, feedback and engagement, not only with the Public Works team, but from residents in the area. This week, as we prepare for the transition, um, garbage and recycling for Roebuck residents were still collected, um, yesterday, and will be picked up again this Thursday. Again, this change will go into effect next week. Um, just a note, there has been, uh, significant engagement with the residents, um, by mail and other forms of communication, and there will be continued, um, community, communication engagement for the residents of Roebuck. We do want to encourage the residents in that area to place their garbage cart on the curb of the front streets. That's actually for all of our residents. The night before pickup, um, or no later than 6:00 a.m., the morning of pickup service. Just a note for Roebuck, no alley garbage pickup service will be provided, except as determined and communicated by the Department of Public Works. As you know, carts must be returned to the residents within 24 hours following service of pickup. And residents should continue to bag all garbage to prevent litter from escaping during the pickup process. Just two more notes on this. No trash will be collected that is on top of this, or the side of the cart, as everything must fit and side with the lid closed. And of course, for the neighborhood, bulk trash will pick up as, with the current schedule. For residents in the Roebuck area who may have any questions or comments, you can call NOM 311, or you can email pickup@birminghamal.gov. And for residents of Roebuck who need more additional information, they can go to birminghamal.gov/pickup. And again, we'll continue to communicate, uh, with those residents directly in various communication channels. Please note, um, that bulk trash citywide is behind schedule. Um, I shared last week, I don't think I did this at your public meeting, uh, but in 31 days of May, there were actually 21 days of rain, uh, which was, uh, the wettest, the third wettest May we've had in Birmingham's history. It turns out, uh, due to that, um, significant amount of rain down, rain pour we've had in our city, um, horticultural weed abatement is behind. Um, but bulk is also behind as well. Um, I do want to give you a note on a couple of things they're doing to resolve this. One is going to a six-day work week, that includes Saturdays. Um, two, they've hired nine new operators who are currently being trained, and also the construction division is assisting in the district. That is most behind. Um, DPW has targeted a week from Friday, although they believe they'll be back on schedule as it relates to bulk, um, pickup, um, bearing no additional issues. Mr. President, council will continue to communicate this, these adjustments in schedules, and we really apologize for any inconvenience it may have caused. I want to move on and share some updates about the sustainability plan. There will be a host of public workshops this week. Um, the committee is bringing the community together to talk about what sustainability means in the city of Birmingham. Of course, for our residents, this is an opportunity to learn about the sustainab- sustainability planning process, to share what challenges matter most to you, as well as draft the goals that will guide our future. So, we want to share with the community that you all are invited to attend visionary workshops and help shape a more sustainable Birmingham. The following dates and locations include June 4th at the Birmingham Botanical Gardens, June 5th at the North Birmingham Library, June 12th at Birmingham Crossplex, and June 17th at Social Venture, which is in Woodline. Residents can go to sustainab- bhamsustainability.com for more information, as well as Marie. Do you know what time those meetings start?
Yes, it's on that website. We have those at various times.
Yep. So, each meeting time will not be the same. Uh, we'll continue to communicate this information and want to encourage residents to go to bhamsustainability.com for more information. There's also another, um, important project this council has been supporting, and that Crossroads Project. So, there will be a community studio week starting next week, June 10th through the 14th. Uh, this allows for... Well, I want to back up and tell you what this is. If you're unaware, just to recap, this is a visionary initiative to reconnect neighborhoods, improve mobility, and honor Birmingham's civil rights legacy. This community studio will be hosted at Legion Field, the 10th through the 14th. This week-long public engagement effort, what we want to do is invite residents, business owners, students, stakeholders from across the civil rights district, neighborhoods of Smithfield, Gray Mount, and Gray Munt, and surrounding areas, to share their ideas and feedback that will shape the project's direction. As you know, the Civil Rights Crossroads Project is funded in part by $21 million, U.S. Department of Transportation raised grant, and it will deliver 3.16 miles of multimodal improvements, which include new trails, sidewalks, mobility hubs, and culturally inspired public place, space for enhancements. We want to encourage our residents to take the project survey, but also attend these workshops, the 10th through the 14th, and share their thoughts on what can this space be. Our residents can get more information at bhmcrossroads.com. Again, that is bhmcrossroads.com. At this time, as the president and council, I would like to ask Mr. Cameron Blankenship and any guests that he has with him to come to the podium. As this young man comes to the podium, Cameron is an honor student with a 3.5 GPA. Not sure why they're being so shy. As I've stated, Cameron is an honor student with a 3.5 GPA, a member of the Engineering Academy, and a member of the Ramsey-Barcelay basketball team. He's also a videographer, and he is excited to be a part of the senior class of 2026. Cameron will be traveling to Barcelona, Spain, to represent the USA in international competition. While there, he'll be part of a competition as a member of the Under-18 Student World Athlete USA Basketball Team, which will be through June 7th through the 16th. So, he's getting ready to get out of here in a minute, and I understand that there's room for me? The answer is no. We do want to give, um, Cameron a big congratulations. We want him to know the city is very proud of him, and we wish him success, not just representing himself, his family, and his school, but representing Birmingham. With that said, Cameron, I wanted to give you the mic, share a few words.
Uh, thank you, Mayor, and the rest of the city council for recognizing me today. Uh, I'm really excited for the, um, event in Spain, so, thank you.
Thank you, Cameron. Mr. President and council, at this time, I would like to ask Ms. Uche Bean, Director of Community Safety Initiatives, as well as Councilor Tanya Tate, to join me at the podium. As they come, as you know, your colleague, um, actually, I am, I apologize. I want all the members of the Public Safety Committee to come down. Yeah, so don't be shy. As they come down, and as Ms. Uche Bean comes up, we want to remind the public that June is Gun Violence Awareness Month. Uh, we got some sober stats that we want to share with you, but it's important when you bring awareness to be transparent. And because this is a national conversation, it's a national problem. Today, we would like to bring about awareness of the impacts of gun violence. We want to honor the important work our city does to help with the prevention of this public health crisis, but also support those victims and survivors with the proclamation that I'll read in part. In the states where Americans are 26 times more likely to die by gun homicide than any other high-income countries, highlighting the urgency of addressing this uniquely American crisis. Whereas anyone can join the movement to end gun violence by pledging to wear orange, June 2nd, as you know, was yesterday, a color that symbolizes the value of human life and honors the more than 43,000 people this country lost to gun violence, loses to gun violence each year. And whereas Birmingham's multilayered approach as public health experts, survivors, and community stakeholders, is part of our commitment to address violence, not just as crime, but focus on its root causes. And whereas wearing orange represents the value of human life and the hope for a future free of fear, where children can grow up without the trauma of gunfire in their neighborhoods. Now, therefore, I Randall L. Woodfin, Mayor, wearing orange represents the value of human life and the hope for a future free of fear, where children can grow up without the trauma of gunfire. Tate, um, she'll get the last word, um, and she'll speak on behalf of the Public Safety Committee, but I wanted Ms. Bean to speak first and share a few words.
Good morning, everyone. Um, I just want to thank you all for honoring those survivors and those that worked day-to-day on the ground to stop communities from dealing with the trauma of gun violence. I'm really excited today, as we continue to work to keep our homicides down, to keep our gun violence down, um, that we honor this day for those that have, uh, gone on because of this crisis. Thank y'all.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank my colleagues. I just want to thank Uche Bean, and thank my committee colleagues and all of you all for embracing the initiatives that we was able to bring back, um, you know, to this city, and thank the mayor for the investments that he has really made in, uh, reducing violence, um, in this city. Thank offender alumni association, the One Hood Wins, um, the violent interrupters, and just thank everybody for all the hard work. We still got ways to go, but we have made some tremendous impact in this city when it comes to reducing violence. And remember the survivors and go, you know, visit these organizations, OAA. I was just over there yesterday doing just some beautiful work that they're doing, and their team, Deborah Daniels and her team, Jacoby Williams with the One Hood Wins. But again, Mayor, thank you, uh, for embracing and, you know, investing in this gun violence reduction strategy. Thank you to my colleagues and my committee members. Thank you all.
Mr. President and council, as your colleagues come back up to the dais, I only have one more note, and it is related to the, recruitment and retention plan you all approved back in November. I wanted to give you, continue to be transparent and provide updates. I think what you're about to hear is actually great news. As you all are well aware, in November, we were down 223 total officers, uh, which meant, uh, we were operating at a 73% workforce related to BPD. Um, as you know, there's been tremendous, um, work that's been done as it relates to the implementation and execution of this police recruitment and retention plan. Today, BPD is operating at 80% overall workforce. Um, just recall, between November and April, uh, we've had 37 new officers and 15 lateral transfers. As you also know, we currently have 50 recruits in the academy class that started April 7th. We currently have 149 officer positions that are vacant. The good news is the next police academy class starts August 4th. The better news is for this August 4th class that will start, 184 people have already participated in the physical agility screening so far. Of that 184, 112 have passed the physical agility screening that allows them to go to the next step in the process. I want to be very clear, this is not about, um, quantity, this is about quality. There's a process, uh, that doesn't mean, no, 112 will make the next step. What it does show, whether it's 112 who made it to the next step, or 184 that have expressed interest in the August class, um, is that there is very, very high interest in people not only wanting to be in public safety and public service, but become Birmingham police officers. Uh, that does not include the continued increase in lateral transfers from around the Jefferson County area and other states, as well as the next police academy class after August 4th starts in November. Based on this trend line, going from 73 to 80%, uh, we're well on our way to being fully staffed, uh, by the first quarter of 2026. So, with that, Mr. President and council, that concludes the mayor's report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Councilor Abbott.
I know you were talking about garbage pickup in the Roebuck area, but I had a general question. Um, at what point are we going to actually require people to bag their garbage and to use the uniform cans rather than whatever they have in the backyard? When are we going to start enforcing the rules?
So, council, a part of what the mayor's directed us to do is to give a slight transition period, because we know that many of the citizens were still buying second carts. But the enforcement process has began, and what we've been telling citizens when they do place those items out is that that window is short, is tightening really fast. So, it will be in the ensuing future, very near future, but he wanted to allow transition while they were purchasing second carts. So, they're, but they're doing the enforcement and education as we speak when they go out.
Okay, how are they doing that?
So, typically, when they see it, they've been encouraged to speak with those residents at that time, and to also let us know so we can do follow-up globally, too.
But I hear what you're saying, Ms. Abbott, there's, there's... I guess there are two breaches in this process mainly. One, um, people don't put their stuff in bags, and two, people don't pull up their carts within 24 hours. Um, I think what we've attempted to do as it relates to code enforcement, um, we haven't prioritized that. But if we do, we wanted to center it around educating and engaging people first, and then tap the hand of those who we've had those conversations with, um, where that, that's not working and escalated, um, to go into environmental court based on violating what's in the code, related to you're mandated to remove your new bin off the curb and take it back to your property within 24 hours, as well as put it in the bag.
Okay, well...
The other thing, the other thing is this, and it's very, very simple, um, and this is particularly for those, um... Because we have gotten better with those who are not putting everything in the lid, right? There were those who are still putting things on the side. There were those who were putting stuff on top, putting behind. That was worse than removing it within 24 hours, as well as not putting it in the bag. The good news is, we do feel the over-communication and the education piece has decreased those efforts. We now need to move to increasing our communication around it has to be in a bag, and you have to remove it off the curb back to your property within 24 hours.
Okay, well, I'm glad to hear that, but it's not happening in Glen Iris, and it's not happening in Five Point South neighborhoods.
Which one? We're removing it, removing it within 24 hours?
Let me tell you, on top of the uniform garbage can beside it, all around it, in non-uniform containers, um, people have actually constructed wooden holders to hold their garbage can out on the city right-of-way, so that they won't have to move it. They think that constructing a holder on city right-of-way makes it legal. It makes everything look trashy. The uniform, you'll have the uniform container and three junky-looking things with nothing in bags, and it is just frustrating for the residents who do right to have all these other people do wrong, and no one does anything about it.
Glen Iris somewhere?
And I don't, I, I can send you pictures, but all it takes is driving around and looking. But if our people continue to let folks get by with it, it's just going to get worse, because it's already gotten worse.
All right, well, we'll get with, um, you know, we have the tendency to also include letters. I think the legal department can partner with P, um, the Department of Transp- not Department of Transportation, Public Works. And for those repeat offenders, um, you know, send a letter that we can put on top of that lid to express, this is what you're responsible for, this is what you're being violation in if you're not doing your part.
Yeah, it's, it's just, it's out of control, and no one's doing anything. And I, I appreciate the fact that we want to give people time. We've given them time to make a big mess, and now it's time to clean it up. And some cities have hang tags and stickers that they put on the can and say, "We didn't pick up your garbage today, because you did this, 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 and this," and they have check marks. Somebody sent me some from Troy, Michigan. So, it can be, if something can be done, because the owners are very rarely outside standing around when the garbage truck comes. So, telling the person, who are you going to tell? They're at work or, or asleep. But anyway, i- it's just, I see it, I see it every single time we have garbage pickup, and it's just so frustrating for the, the residents who care.
Yeah, we are aware of the private companies who have something equivalent of a door knocker that you can tag into, um... That tag is usually for those that says, "We didn't pick up your trash, here's why." Uh, that comes with its own complications when you do that and don't pick up the trash. But we're wading through how to communicate with those who are in violation.
Good. I hope, I hope they hurry up. I mean, they've had a big window.
They have.
And they have had a big window to learn how to do it wrong. So, now we need to show them how to do it right, so that our neighborhoods don't look so trashy.
Well, majority of people are in compliance, citywide. Um, and I wouldn't say citywide it looks trashy. But I want to focus on some of those areas, um, to zone in on. You mentioned Glen Iris as an example.
And Five Point South.
And five, you've mentioned two neighborhoods.
They're side by side.
Department of Public Works.
Point South.
Department of Attention, related to those who are not complying.
And, and there might be a comment about on the curb means on top of the curb rather than out in the street, where a lot of people like to put their garbage, their uniform garbage can or whatever garbage cans, which takes up the parking that is in such short supply, so.
Yes, ma'am.
There's lots of educational opportunities here.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Council Williams.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to, uh, get a little bit of clarification on Roebuck. That, that, is it Roebuck? It's not South Roebuck or Roebuck Springs, right? It's just Roebuck. Okay.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. And then the other question I had is about the delay. I, well, you alluded to it, it's, we have a delay in bulk trash.
We have delay in, we have delay in bulk trash.
Okay, because Roebuck Springs, which I didn't know if it had something to do with the new schedule, has, we've gotten complaints that they've had two missed services, so they've gone a full over month without any bulk trash, Roebuck Springs. And so, we've sent up some through-on-one numbers, but we hadn't gotten anything.
I'm putting it in my phone.
Okay. I just wanted, I didn't know if the two were correlated or whatever, but I just wanted to, um, I got some emails while, after you announced that, so I wanted to make sure...
Yeah, I think all of you all will probably get some emails or reach out about bulk trash. It's a citywide issue right now.
Okay.
Again, we're looking to, uh, we're six days, try to catch up by the end, not this Friday. Uh, probably be close to, uh, about a week and a half catching up.
Yeah, and so, I can't help it, but because this is of topic, you know, one thing that I think some other municipalities do well, and I've talked about us exploring before, and I think maybe with this new budget, it's an opportunity down the road for us to explore, is instead of bulk trash going by every single resident on whatever that day is and whatever that interval is, twice a month, three times, uh, whatever the interval is, that, you know, we utilize a 311 call system where people are allowed to reserve a bulk trash pickup one or two times a month.
Opting in, basically.
Yeah, but like, you know, at, you know, if they know they're going to have yard, do yard work and leave it out, so they opt in, and then when, when they don't opt in and just leave mess on the street, um, which, and sometimes almost emulates criminal littering, um, because of all the stuff they leave on the street, that, uh, that they get a citation. So, you know, anyway, it'd be worth exploring.
What were you going to say, Cedric?
Counselor...
I was going to note, I was going to note to Council Abbott, by the way, that Council Abbott, um, our DPW team said that tags were issued on a recurring basis, and they, for the folks who are the repeat offenders, that they've issued tags to them, and they're, they've included pictures. We'll make sure we provide those to you.
Did you hear him, Ms. Abbott?
I was having trouble hearing, because he's behind the wood.
Can you repeat that?
Our Public Works Department noted, to the point that you raised, that tags have been issued to the people who are repeat offenders, who've been doing it on a recurring basis, and we'll provide pictures of those for you.
Okay, well, that'd be good, but when do we enforce when they ignore?
So, that's, that's the second step.
Is that phase two?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. But I would like to see the, see what they're sending people.
Um, and that is, we, so, we, we are having a, a real problem with, um, homeless or unhoused or whatever we wanna call, um, residents that are, you know, there's a, there's a new homeless camp set up right behind the Publix on Montclair Road and, um, there, there's, I, I'm getting overwhelmed with this homeless, it, let me ask you this. Do we have any enforcement about people just popping up a homeless shelter and without going through zoning or anything? Okay, because it's come to my attention that the, the, uh, that the former thrift store behind the Milos now is housing homeless people, which is, I think, the cause of, of, of a lot of these camps that are just popping up. And, and you, sir, um, had, uh, had, had a couple of the camps, you know, we, we had our team reach out and make sure that they have what they need to go elsewhere and, and they're all back. And I think it's because people are living in that former thrift store.
Behind, behind Milos, you said?
Yeah, behind Milo. I think it's called King's Thrift, but, you know, that. Anyway, I, that, it's becoming, like, now I have all the businesses that are just at my throat about it.
We'll send, um, we'll send, we'll send Ms. Melton, Urban Alchemy, as well as BPD there today.
Yeah, I'd, I'd like, you know, I'd like BPD.
Two sparks, make sure we send those, um, make sure we send them to that thrift store today.
Thank you very much.
Yes, sir.
Counsel Moore.
Thank you, ma'am, Mr. President. Uh, first thing, what, didn't get a chance to last week to say thank you uh, for, you know, the resurfacing or beginning with, uh, Red Mill Road. I've had a lot of people, you know, uh, calling and saying like, hey, it's about time we're getting this road resurfaced over here. The resurfacing or beginning with, uh, it's about time. And then also wanted to, you know, just give kudos to um, and the work that you all have been able to do to address that huge issue. Can't tell you how many people have, you know, just reached out and said thank you for, you know, finally addressing something that has been a longstanding issue for several decades. Um, and so I de- definitely wanted to make sure that I, I may mention that. Um, I did have a question around, uh, trees because this is something that I'm constantly getting calls about. I know that we've had, you know, several, you know, uh, strong storms that have come through uh, and we just constantly have trees that are falling. We had a tree over in Roebuck not too long ago that, you know, fell through somebody's home. Uh, and there's just so many major trees that, you know, a lot of neighborhoods are concerned about. And I'm, I'm curious as to whether or not we have any, any tools at, at our disposal in terms of being able to address trees that we know, uh, could be problematic, uh, for folks.
Yeah, well, first of all, um, couple notes. Note one is I wanna thank Ms. King publicly as well, D, our D Nat team, what they did in, um, Norwood. I would like for her just to briefly share with you, it's not just about what lawyers are doing, but the voice of residents. That's the part that people don't know, that's not a part of the public conversation. They think elected officials and lawyers just got together. If you can share with him who showed up in that courtroom.
Affected. They shared their voice with D Nat, they came and met with us and they were very vocal about taking their community back.
And that was very community residence-driven, including the residents who actually live there. Not just other residents who don't live there, but the main audience who were standing in front of a judge sitting in the courtroom were the residents, seniors, elders who had felt captive, who felt hostage, who lived there. And so their voice was keen in this, so I just wanted publicly, like you said, kudos to them. Look, forestry, I'm, I wanna talk about the problem first and then when you talk about the future as it relates to anticipating future trees. Um, we have a very impressive, um, forestry tree team. I met several of them a few weeks back. Y'all, there were some mini storms that came through our city quietly. When I told you it was twenty one days of rain, um, I think in district, mm, one and four, one, four and slightly in two, there were some significant trees down city right-of-ways that included main thoroughfares, side neighborhood streets, as well as a significant amount of alleys. Of course, you know, they prioritize in that order just to allow people to move to and from. Forestry focused on the removal, um, if it was on city right-of-way, impeding city right-of-way and/or it was a, um, tree on, um, I guess, on city grounds that fell into private property. There's also a significant amount of private property issues where trees on private property fell. We've since gotten calls of, are you gonna come pick this up? And the answer is no, because they hired contractors and the contractor was responsible for hauling out. So that's creating its own separate issue now that traffic is flowing back and forth. Your question was more so related, um, to future efforts and I'm not gonna stand here and pretend I know the answer, but I'm gonna get you one.
I appreciate that and I know that, you know, uh.
He already has one.
Okay.
So, Counsel, you were talking about assessing those trees, right? So the, was that your question to know whether or not those trees have a likelihood of either being uprooted when we have inc- inclement weather?
Absolutely, yeah, cuz again, we, we just have so many people that have, you know, reached out and, you know, they have identified trees that even are along city right-of-ways that, you know, could pose a problem. Uh, and I think because we've had so many trees to fall, we have a lot of people who are fearful uh, of taking certain routes or, you know, um, walking certain ways because they don't know what's gonna happen with this tree.
So that's a tag-team effort between our Public Works Department and planning and engineering. So once it's determined that it's on a public right-of-way, we then have to have it assessed and determine that that tree is, is basically in danger of being uprooted before the city can take action because our horticulturists, in collaboration with PEP, they're held to a standard of making certain we're not cutting down or, or uprooting trees that really either can be restored or have the health. So yes, to your question, once we receive that notice, they tag-team and go out. If we, if it's on a public right-of-way and we assess that it needs to be either print, uh, trimmed, pruned, like we do that, um, but we also have a standard that we have to maintain, they do as, as our horticulturists, but we do preventative action once we receive notice about it.
And, and I appreciate that and I don't know if, you know, um, some of this preventative measure could be, could take place in like the wintertime, you know, when.
They do.
Okay.
They do, they do, they do treat in the off-season as well.
Got you, okay.
It's just a lot of trees. I wish you can get the, somebody else is gonna have a question. I hope before they exhaust all their questions, we get them the, the number we even know of, how many trees on city right-of-ways.
Proctium Alexander has a related question.
Yes, if I could, and I don't mean to jump in on anyone else who's already indicated they want to talk, but I did wanna piggyback on this. We had a discussion about this at the Grisilla Heights Neighborhood Meeting yesterday and, um, our legacy neighborhoods, they have a lot of trees that are aging and they're hanging over and, um, I feel a lot of that is on city right-of-way. So what is the best method?
What neighborhood?
And this is Grisilla and I believe I escalated some pictures to the intention.
So Grisilla is one for forestry and what's the neighborhood you're referring to in District Four? Is there a particular neighborhood?
So I got several, um, I have one. I have Maple Grove, Penfield Park. Pine Nose Vista.
Just taking notes.
Okay.
All right.
And I wanna say.
If you receive, you receive concern from these neighborhoods?
Yeah, these, these are neighborhoods where trees have actually either fallen or are leaning.
Okay.
Yeah.
And so what I wanted to ask about procedurally, what is the best way for residents to, cuz this particular, um, way that we were notified was through an email and they wanted to go to the news outlets. And so what I'd like to find out is a way that we can manage that better.
I think three-on-one is tailor-made for that. If you don't get the responses, you know, routed up. I'm telling you, this is a very impressive forestry team. That's all they do, you know, they're not sending off, they're out there.
Well, that was part of the discussion yesterday to make residents aware that there is a forestry team and that they do come out and it's not just reactive, they're doing proactive, those type of assessments. So I just wanted to be sure how they make that, make that knowledgeable to DPW. And also if you could target, we know on Oxmo Road, uh, right near Red Mountain Park, there was, the storms really damaged that area and people became a problem because people were having to back down a windy road that already has a lot of, um, drop-off. So thanks, just wanted to add that, thank you.
Counsel Smith.
Um, also, I just got a text from myself that West End Manor has the same issue as well, older trees, yeah. I wanted to really ask about animal control and if we can have an update. Um, I just remember going to my parents' house and seeing a very huge dog um, that I've been hearing about neighbors and my parents complaining about and they've been also seeing a fox as well that's been, um, in the neighborhood and it's concern for dog owners. I think, huh, Counsel Williams is a dog owner because you can't even walk your dog if you worry about a bigger dog or even a fox. We've seen a possum that has been, it was a big possum. So what is the update for animal control? Like, what do we tell people?
Yeah, I don't have, I don't have an, I don't have an additional update since the last time we had the Budget Town Hall meeting where Mr. Yates got up and talked about kind of what we're doing around animal control, which is including well over two thousand animals. Uh, the animal control comes into contact a year as well as process. That being the case, um, I think I'll just kind of restate what I said in that same meeting. Um, I wanna encourage the ten of us, uh, to get it legal. Um, from an ordinance standpoint, put some of this onus back on the adults or the humans cuz I think a lot of this behavior has to be changed at, at the, the human level as far as people not being accountable for taking care of, of their animals. But I just think that we can do that through, um, uh, amending the current ordinances that exist around animal control.
So is, if they see a dog.
Enforcement standpoint, they're out there. I mean, again, I don't know what two thousand, uh, is about it daily, but I know they are out there actively catching, taming, or whatever word we wanna use as it relates to, um, um, animals who either don't have shelter or roaming neighborhoods.
So that's three-on-one, they need to call for animal control?
I didn't know that was a question, forget it.
Is that three-on-one they call? And so what about the wild animals? Cuz they're not gonna pick up the wild animals. We're talking about foxes, possums, what should people do? Wildlife?
Working wildlife on those, on the wild animals.
Okay, so if somebody calls three-on-one, will they be able to tell them who to call?
Right, so if, if they, if they route that to animal control, if it's a wild animal, then they coordinate with wild, the National Wildlife.
I just wanna make sure, all right. That's it, okay, all right, thank you.
Uh, Counselor Tate, I believe you had a, you wanted to make a comment?
Just to piggyback off what everybody's saying about the trees, cuz, Mayor, I did turn some stuff in to Ms. Markin, um, and Hooper City has the same, the issue as well. Yeah, thank you, Mayor, appreciate it.
Okay, Counsel Moore, you got?
Yeah, I just had one, I, since I've been talking, I got a text message about, uh, Fifty Second Street over in, uh, Woodline, uh, where a tree is falling, um.
Fifty Second?
Fifty Second.
In what?
Uh, ooh, I know, right? Uh, I'll find out.
Fifty Second's not a short road.
Yeah. Texting them now to find out, but I'll send it to you.
Yes, sir.
Um, just a, a note, just because I've done some research on this, uh, with regards to, um, wildlife species.
Yeah, help me out.
Yeah, so the, uh, it's my understanding that the, the city has an agreement with, um, a USDA agent, um, to pull removal of certain species. So this would be like, you know, beavers that potentially dam up some of our, um, drainage, you know, waterways or, um, for water fowl specifically around the, the airport. Um, but, you know, common things like coyotes, possums, raccoons uh, and other, uh, wildlife, um, that, those aren't covered, so, um, you know, that's just where we are. Counselor Abbott.
Yeah, and also there are laws that have to deal with wildlife and you can't just go out and kill them cuz you feel like it and you can't transport them across county lines. So people need to understand the law before they go out and try to take care of things themselves. Where I live, we have a whole family of foxes, we have seven and there's two parents and five little ones. So they're going to disperse soon and they will probably come over to nearby neighborhoods for a visit, but they do not eat your pets. They eat squirrels and rats and voles and moles and roaches and fruit. We've done a lot of research on them too because we have seven. Uh, but they chase the coyotes a little bit. A coyote is really bait, so it's interesting, but you can't go out and just kill things because you don't like them being around and, um, that's just a fact. And I got that information from our zoo director, our previous zoo director who was trying to educate me because people were complaining about wildlife.
Yes, ma'am.
So, just interesting information.
Very.
All right, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, Counsel.
All right.
Yes, sir. Today, we have a vacancy with Birmingham Landback Authority. Scotty Colson, term expires July the fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-five. Is a four-year term and is under the Community Development Committee. And under the Design Review Committee, we have one, two, three, four vacancies. All expired July the thirtieth, uh, two thousand and twenty-five. They have three-year terms, have Craig Hoskins, Richard Mauk, Cheryl Morgan, uh, Ben Wiseman and Ben Wiseman. And they are under the Planning and Zoning Committee.
Okay, thank you. Counsel, without objection, we're suspend the rules for presentation from Counsel Woods.
Good morning, I'd like to invite, uh, women under construction up to the podium at this time. Excited to have women under construction here this morning. I am standing in for my colleague Counselor Clark, who, uh, appreciate her bringing women under construction down to celebrate their ten-year anniversary. They've, uh, made a tremendous impact in the community and so we're more than happy to honor them at this time with a resolution, uh, to memorialize their service and their work. And so I will bear with me. Whereas it is with immense pleasure that this legislative body pauses today to recognize the Women Under Construction Network, a nonprofit organization that is responsible for inspiring, educating and empowering women. And whereas WUCN founder and CEO, Michelle Lee Lane, is a Boston native, a master's in education graduate from Cambridge College, a media personality, a former multimillion-dollar real estate broker and an award-winning public speaker. She served as the twenty twenty-five SBA Lift and Lead Panel Moderator for the City of Birmingham Small Business Week, hosted and produced the TV and newspaper column, At Home With Shelley, created the upcoming book show, book slash show, Tool In Your Life With Shelley, syndicated, At Home Tips in a Minute, and received the AARP Purpose Prize Fellowship Award. And whereas based in Birmingham, Alabama, WUCN has grown into a powerful five-on-one C-three nonprofit organization that has positively impacted sixty-two cities and eighteen states. WUCN has empowered more than thirteen thousand women through outside-the-box educational and personal development programs focused on home improvement, self-sufficiency and emotional well-being. It utilizes physical tools as metaphors for life with the purpose of instructing, empowering and elevating marginalized women, youth and seniors through impactful hands-on programming, community initiatives and life preparation training. Whereas some of WUCN's key programs and initiatives are Building Hope, Twenty One Days of Kindness, a yearly June initiative engaging hundreds of volunteers and thousands of deeds of kindness across Birmingham and central Alabama, the What I Learned at Home Project. The What I Learned at Home Project, designed for women in low-income public housing communities. DIY Live, a series of hands-on, in-person events where women are instructed on basic home repair skills, tools, tool use, and financial fluency. Home Safe and Repair Angels, rebuilding elderly pride to achieve independence and restoration, which is centered on combating loneliness, depression, and food insecurity in the elderly. Y Tools for Life, an extracurricular confidence-building program fostering practical life and tool-use competence in youth. I Build University, which is aimed at women college age and up, involves participants in community service while connecting them to underserved groups. And Freedom Friday in the Park, a multicultural wellness event supporting more than fifty women on a monthly basis. Over the past, well, whereas over the past few years, the WUCN has earned many awards and accolades for their efforts on behalf of the community, to name a few. The twenty twenty-two AARP National Purpose Prize Fellowship Award, the twenty twenty-three Platinum Transparency Award, the twenty twenty-three Top Rated Award, Great Nonprofits, the twenty twenty-four Women's Committee of One Hundred for Birmingham Brother Brian Prayer Point Award, the Community Foundation Greater Birmingham Grant Award, the twenty twenty-four Women's Foundation of Alabama Grant Award, the twenty twenty-four UAB Center for Exercise Medicine, Center for Study of Community Health Joint Pilot Program Award, the twenty twenty-four Top Rated Award, Great Nonprofits, the twenty twenty-five Navigate Give Back Award, and the twenty twenty-five Foundation, Women's Foundation of Alabama Grant Award. Now therefore be it resolved that the Council of the City of Birmingham, with Mayor Randall L. Woodfin concurring, pauses in its deliberations to congratulate and celebrate the Women Under Construction Network on the momentous occasion of their tenth anniversary event being held today, June third, two thousand and twenty-five. With Ms. Shelley Lane at the helm, WUCN has evolved into a framework for empowerment through empathy, practical tools, and community-centered service. We thank them for their countless contributions on behalf of the most underserved member, uh, members of our communities.
All right. Motion for unanimous consent?
Second.
All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Move the resolution.
Second.
All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Motion's approved.
And so we appreciate Carol. I can tell she has something to do with making sure we got all the facts and information in. We did not want to shortchange them at all. But, uh, like I said, we're honored to have them here today. I want to invite Ms. Shelley Lane up to the podium to share a few words.
I want to say thank you to the council. Um, we have been all over the city, um, doing events for the last ten years. It's amazing to see that we are ten years old. But we could not have done that without you all, without you all. So I want to say thank you. I want to say two things. One is, I brought my tool with me. I bring my tools wherever I go. Many of you don't know that we really do teach a little bit of home repair and a whole lot of life repair. And so my drill really is, it works. My drill really is for persistence. And that means that we're going to keep going. We're going to keep serving the women of Birmingham and around and outside and cities, um, beyond Birmingham. We're going to keep serving the communities that you all serve so well. And then also I brought my measuring tape. And again, we teach women how to measure where they are and how far they've come. We've come a long way, but we could not have done it without you all. Thank you, Councilman Woods. Thank you for all of you all. Thank the mayor's office for what you all do. Again, we could not have done it without you. I do want to say one last thing, and that is, ladies, if you all will do the Women Under Construction cheer. Y'all ready? One, two, three.
We are women, yeah, under construction, yeah, and we are building, yeah, we're building hope. We are women, yeah, under construction, yeah, and we are building, yeah, we're building hope.
Thank you.
Uh, congratulations once again on ten years and, uh, keep up the good work.
All right. Thank you, Council Woods. This time I'll read our statement on the conduct of business. Oh, oh, I'm sorry. Mayor Woodfin.
Please forgive me, but we had such a robust conversation around trees, I wanted to give you the number on the record. They've just informed me that there's approximately seven hundred and fifty thousand trees on our city right away, citywide. That's a lot. I'm sorry. Say it one, say it one more time. Five zero one one. But to be exact, seven hundred and fifty thousand. Yes, sir.
Okay.
And that's a good thing.
Yes. All right. All items designated as consent are routine and non-controversial and will be approved by one motion. All items on the consent agenda will be announced by reading the item numbers only. No separate discussion of these items will be permitted unless a council member or the mayor requests the item be removed from the consent agenda. Additionally, a citizen interested in addressing the council with respect to an item on the consent agenda designated for public hearing may repu, may request the item be removed from the consent agenda to hold the hearing on the item. Any items removed from the consent agenda will revert to it, to its normal place on the agenda order of business. For remaining matters, all matters of permanent operation will be read and all public hearings will be announced. Mr. Clark, could we please read through the items on our consent agenda?
Our consent agenda starts on page two with items one, two, three, and four. Page three, items five and six are on consent. Skip over to page fifteen. Item seven is on consent. Uh, please note it was recommended by the Public Safety Committee. Page sixteen, items eight, nine, and ten are on consent. Uh, same goes for item eight, recommended by Public Safety. Page seventeen, items eleven, twelve, and thirteen are on consent. Page eighteen, items fourteen, fifteen, sixteen, and seventeen are on consent. Page nineteen, items eighteen, nineteen, twenty, and twenty-one are on consent. And that concludes the consent agenda.
Okay. Do any members of the council wish to, uh, add or remove items from the consent agenda? All right. See, none. Do any members of the public wish to remove any of the public hearing items, items one through six, from the consent agenda? Seeing none, we're ready for a motion on the consent agenda.
I move approval.
Second.
Okay. So, Counselor Abbott.
We all move approval.
Abbott and some other members.
All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Okay, the consent agenda is approved. So, uh, item twenty-two, please.
Item twenty-two, a resolution to set a public hearing to consider the closure of Twentieth Avenue South near its intersection with Richard Edward Jr. Boulevard South to vehicular traffic, to control traffic flow from neighboring businesses.
I move approval.
Second.
All right. Any discussion? We're ready for the vote.
Okay. All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Item twenty-two is approved. Item twenty-three, please.
Okay, item twenty-three. Item twenty-three, a resolution accepting the emergency loan sum proposal of Yates, Wright, and Associates, Daphne, Alabama, in the amount of eleven thousand, two hundred and sixty-three dollars for the replacement of the, uh, Litchett pump at Eastern Area Landfield. This being the lowest responsible, responsive proposal submitted and authorized the mayor to enter into the emergency contract with Yates, Wright, and Associates as attached to the form contained within the proposal documents. In accordance with the said proposal, providing that the total compensation payable under the contract, not exceed the appropriation.
Move the item.
Second.
Item is before, it's before you.
All right. Any discussion? We're ready for the vote.
Oh, I'm sorry. Uh, just a note that the, um, change of Eastern Landfill should be New Georgia Landfill. There should be a change. Should be New Georgia Landfill, not Eastern Landfill. All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
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 All opposed?
Okay, uh, that item is approved. That completes all the business items on our agenda. We'll now move on to our announcements. Counselor Moore.
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, wanted to, uh, just say thank you to the administration over at Smith Middle School. Uh, I played basketball, y'all. Like, and I ain't gonna lie, I was a little nervous, man. Um, they asked me to play in the teachers versus students, uh, basketball game. Uh, I had to do a lot of stretching and warming up before I jumped out there, but, uh, I'm glad to say that I was the, you know, the MVP, or at least that's what I'm gonna tell y'all. Um, but I wanted to give a shout out to, you know, um, Principal Williams, uh, and, and her staff. They've done an awesome, amazing job this year, um, which is how they treat the students and the, the educational environment that they provide for them. And so, uh, had an opportunity to play in the ba, teachers versus students basketball game as well as, um, participate in their award ceremony. And so, uh, wanted to say thank you to them for allowing me to be there. Uh, also had the opportunity to attend the Literacy Council's Adult Spelling Bee that took down, uh, took place down at the, uh, Woodline Theater. Um, it was, it was, uh, a lot of organizations that came together, uh, for this fundraising event, um, to put money together to support the Literacy Council as they support, uh, individuals who are learning how to read, uh, and need to read, right? Uh, we all understand that reading is something that, um, really opens up, um, a lot of doors in life. And so, uh, they're providing those opportunities for folks. And so definitely wanted to, uh, give them a shout out, um, and possibly see if the city council can participate next year in forming us a team in the spelling bee. Uh, I don't know what that'll look like, but, uh, yeah. So wanted to say that, uh, and then again, just wanted to, you know, give a shout out to, um, uh, Attorney King, uh, with D-NAT. Again, like, there have been so many people that have reached out and said, man, we're so glad that we're finally able to have this, you know, be addressed. And so, uh, definitely wanted to, you know, uh, give you shouts out and kudos and your team, uh, and to the fearless leader of the Norwood residents, uh, President Barbara Goudy Thomas, uh, who, you know, is very, uh, or was very instrumental in, in making this happen along with each and every resident that came down to the courthouse, uh, that day to, to testify, um, as well. Um, wanted to also just make sure that, uh, let me see. Uh, wanted to announce that the city council has been invited to the men's day that will be held on Sunday, June the eighth, at Oak Street Baptist Church, three two two four Virginia Avenue North, Birmingham, Alabama, three five two oh seven. Breakfast will be served starting at eight AM. Uh, Sunday school will start at eleven AM. Program will start at twelve PM. The speaker will be, uh, Reverend Darian Johnson. And this comes to us by way of none other than the great Mr. Willie Jenkins. Um, and then we also have a couple of neighborhood association meetings that are going to be placed. Uh, we have the Fairmont Neighborhood Association Meeting that will take place today at six PM at Mount Carmel Christ Church, uh, fifty-one ten Cheek Road, Birmingham, Alabama. Uh, we also have, um, the Engle Nook Neighborhood Association, as well as the Airport Highlands and Woodline and Roebuck Neighborhood Associations that will take place on Monday. Um, so if you are in those neighborhoods, please make sure that you come out and attend. And that concludes my announcements.
Thank you, Counselor Moore. Counselor Abbott?
Thank you, Mr. President. The next Planning and Zoning Committee meeting is scheduled for Wednesday, June eleventh at three thirty PM here in the city council chambers. Our neighborhood association meeting for tonight is Forest Park, South Avondale. They meet at six thirty at the Avondale, uh, library. If you have concerns or issues, as we've talked about a lot this morning, call three one one or download the wonderful MyBeHem three one one app where you can include photographs of the issue that you're complaining about and as well as a description, um, that, uh, is of your choosing rather than the interpretation of someone you talked to on the phone. And we want to ask all residents of District Three to please continue to visit our website for other information that we don't have time to tell you this morning in our three minutes. And, um, that's all for me.
Thank you, Counselor Abbott. Counselor Smithman?
Thank you, Mr. President. Oakwood Place Neighborhood will be having their meeting today at four PM at Harrison Park Recreation Center. Mason City will meet today at four thirty PM via teleconference. Nortonsville will meet tomorrow afternoon, well, tomorrow evening at five at Memorial Park Recreation Center. And then West End Manor will meet on Monday, June ninth at five PM at New Hope Baptist Church. The next budget and finance meeting will meet on Monday, June ninth at three thirty PM here in the council chambers. Submissions are due tomorrow by noon. Uh, the Budget Town Hall meeting will be held tomorrow in the council chambers. Um, the meeting is from five thirty PM to six thirty, uh, PM. And then lastly, I want to give a congratulations to Booker T. Washington K three eight school. They were awarded the National Certificate for STEM Excellence. Um, Principal Dr. Ishman noted that this honor represents their commitment to preparing students for the future. It's a testament to their commitment to preparing students with the critical thinking and problem-solving skills they'll need for future success. Um, and it's really just amazing what Dr. Ishman has done for the school from going to almost failing to now being STEM certified. So, um, kudos to them. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counselor Smithman. Pratim Alexander?
Thank you, Mr. President. These are announcements for District Seven. I first want to start by giving a special thank you to Principal Melvin Love and the Oxmo Valley Elementary faculty and staff for the recognition of District Seven's support for the school's twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five program objectives. During their recent community partner appreciation luncheon, we were joined by several organizations and parents and volunteers. And it's always great to have an opportunity to someone to recognize your support and, uh, the work that's done there. So I would really want to thank Principal Love and his staff as, um, they all prepare for summer vacation for the fine work they do in, um, motivating and educating our scholars in D seven. Fit, Fit While You Sit classes. We're really trying to build those classes. And so we have one at nine thirty on Thursday at the Roosevelt Rec Center and another one at Friday at ten thirty. So just, uh, spend a little time to get yourself motivated and get some exercise in. Our neighborhood meeting, our remaining neighborhood meeting for this week is Friday, June sixth. The Jones Valley Neighborhood Association will meet at four PM at the Powley Library. We have on Monday, June ninth. These are the upcoming neighborhood meetings for next week. On Monday, we have the West Goldwire Neighborhood that meets at five PM via conference call. The Powley Neighborhood Association will meet at five thirty on Monday at the Henry Crumpton Rec Center. And Oxmo Valley Neighborhood Association will meet at six PM at the Oxmo Rec Center. Please don't forget to dial three one one to report a missed pickup or the D seven hotline at two zero five three zero four one seven nine seven. And, um, we're almost to that date. On Friday, June thirteenth, The Files Arts Project will be hosting their twelfth annual dance and music workshop in Short Case. So go to www dot thefilesartsproject dot com for more information. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Pratim. Counsel Williams?
Thank you very much. Um, Economic Development and Tourism Committee will have a work session in Conference Room D and E, uh, at eleven thirty. Uh, Mr. Woods, if you could jump in there. Who else? Oh, Carol's on him. Anyway, um, Eastwood Neighborhood Meeting will be Thursday, June fifth at six thirty Habitat for Humanity. And then there, we have four days until the fishing rodeo. Y'all have, um, a shirt in front of you, which will be, uh, this year's shirt. So the first, um, uh, several hundred folks that show up, it's first come, first served. But the first, uh, several hundred folks that show up, uh, will get a, a shirt, uh, from seven AM to one PM. And so it's completely free, same as it always is. We look forward to seeing everybody out there. We'll have music, food trucks, jump houses, all that kind of good stuff. And we will be stocking the lake with, uh, two thousand pounds of catfish. So if you don't catch anything, it's because you're not a good fisher, man or woman. So, anyway. We look forward to seeing everybody out there.
Always appreciate those, uh, T-shirts. I've got like the entire collection from the last past eight years.
Um, no, they're, they're soft, so you can ac, you can actually wear them. And like, a lot, a lot of our city shirts are a little tough.
Mine, mine get a lot of use. So I love that logo, for sure. All right. Uh, thank you, Counsel Williams. Counselor Tate?
Thank you, Mr. President. Wyland Neighborhood Association Meeting is tonight at six PM at the Wyland Public Library. Thomas Neighborhood Association Meeting is tonight at six thirty PM at Mount Keever Baptist Church. Cypico Finley Neighborhood Association Meeting will be on Wednesday, June the fourth at five thirty, and that's at the Cypico Plant Community Room. North Birmingham Neighborhood Association will be meeting on Monday, June the ninth at six PM at North. at six PM at North Birmingham Library, the next public safety meeting will be held on Tuesday, June the tenth, right here in the city council chamber, please submit your agenda items by email, no later than Wednesday, January the fourth at twelve noon to Gregory dot Stanley at Birmingham AL dot gov and Ashanta dot C F S at Birmingham AL dot gov, as we continue with the Wear Orange and Gun Balance Weekend, I'm, um, so grateful to be in partnership with Councilor Smitherman with the Wear Orange, there's a whole lot of things going on this whole weekend, starting with a community cleanup Saturday from nine to eleven, we're gonna dip over at Hunter at seven and then go clean up a little bit, um, and that's at McEl Pine Park, and then also following that, it's gonna be a basketball tournament located, it's gonna be at, uh, Memorial Park in Council Smitherman's district, and that's from two PM to five-thirty, open runs, just a whole lot of things going on, little bam, and then on Sunday, it's gonna be a Stop the Violence Block Party, and that's Sunday at, from two PM to six PM to Sherman Heights Neighbor, at the Sherman Heights Parks, we wanna thank Orlando and the Dream Mented Team for bringing all of these great events this whole weekend, so, come clean up, go fish, go play basketball, and let's enjoy a block party, thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilor Tate, Councilor Woods.
Thank you, Mr. President, a few quick announcements, uh, the Apple Valley Neighborhood will meet tonight at six-thirty PM, that meeting is at the East Penson Valley Rec Center, the Spring Lake Neighborhood will meet on Thursday at six-thirty PM at the Huffman High School Library, the Echo Highlands Neighborhood will meet also on Thursday at seven PM, uh, via Zoom, so, always wanna encourage everyone to participate in their neighborhood associations, uh, also just wanna, uh, celebrate all the graduates, we've had everything from twelfth grade to eighth grade to fifth grade to kindergarten to preschool, um, so, we, we got them all covered, so, congratulations, everybody, keep working, keep achieving, thank you.
Alright, Councilor Tate.
Thank you, Mr. President, just a kindly friendly reminder, the Public Safety Committee, which consists of myself, Councilwoman Williams and Councilor Moore, the Special Care Facilities Finance and Authority of Birmingham Children's Hospital is a public corporation organized pursuant Alabama Code Section eleven dash six-two dash one dash eleven dash six-two nineteen states, a three-member board is established to exercise all powers of authority, qualifications, you must be a qualified electant on real property in the city of Birmingham, it's a six-year term, send your applications and your resumes, I mean, your resumes, um, today, um, to Gregory dot Stanley at Birmingham AL dot gov, and you can call the offices two oh five two five four twenty-three oh two for additional information, um, to apply to this board, so, please, ma'am and sir, if you're interested, um, in the Special Care Facilities Finance and Authority of Birmingham, please call the office on today, thank you.
Alright, thank you, Councilor Abbott.
Thank you, Mr. President, um, I noticed that item twenty-two on our agenda did not give a date for the public hearing that we set, which I'm sure was an error, and so, I wanted to say that in the backup information, it does say that the public hearing is July eighth at nine-thirty in the morning here in this room, but we do have a lot of residents that are very, very, very interested in this, um, item, so, I thought that I should announce the date so they would know when to show up.
Yes, ma'am, this is during council meeting, yes, ma'am.
Good, thank you.
Okay, Councilor Moore.
Yeah, so, Max, uh, will be having a community meeting, uh, Max Transit invites you to attend their upcoming community meeting to share you, your feedback, uh, learn about updates for October route changes that affect the North Birmingham area, including routes twenty-three, forty, and the Magic City Connector, uh, there will be light refreshments, uh, that will be served, and this will all take place today, um, June third, um, from four to six PM at the North Birmingham Public Library, twenty-five oh one thirty-first Avenue North, um, then also forgot to make mention that we will be having the community development meeting today at two PM, uh, as well as Birmingham Park and Recreation Board meeting will take place tomorrow at nine AM at Legion Field, um, and then also wanted to, uh, invite folks to, uh, the launch of Strive Birmingham, uh, they have a new site that is going to be in the Woodlawn area, um, they are launching their Future Leaders Pro Program that will provide job training, um, and career exploration and personalized support to young adults between the ages of eighteen to twenty-four, uh, who have been impacted by the justice system, um, bridging education gaps, uh, and, and bridging education gaps that they've experienced, uh, this will all take place on June the fourth, which is tomorrow, uh, from three PM to five PM at the So, at Social Venture, um, that address is fifty-five twenty-nine First Avenue South, Birmingham, Alabama, three-five-two-one-two, um, thank you.
Good. You good?
I'm positive.
Alright, Councilor Abbott, um, I did, um, I saw your look whenever you, Councilor Moore was talking about the, um, Max Transit update, I reached out to them last night regarding the issue that you raised last week, and, um, they should be getting in contact with you, I would expect today, I haven't, I just checked my.
Now, he gets a meeting with refreshments and we get nothing, I mean, I, I, I don't want a meeting with refreshments, what I want to do as a council member is to be informed when they're going to cut off bus service in my district so that I can say something to people about it before the signs go up, the neighborhood meeting last night, people were really upset at the fact that they had no notice whatsoever and that there are a lot of people who need that service that got cut off, and now they have to walk, oh, I forget how far it is, but, if you're handicapped, moving your bus stop is a big deal, and if you're blind, it's an even bigger deal, and I'm just, I'm just kind of fascinated by the fact that he gets a meeting and a party and we don't even get notification.
I will follow up with them immediately after this meeting.
Yeah, I mean, if they're gonna get in touch with me, that's great, but it's kind of a day late and a dollar short.
I'm, I'm sure you will convey that to them when they contact you.
I'm sure I will.
Yes, alright, for District Five, um, we have the Eastlake Neighborhood Association meeting tonight at six PM at the Household of Faith Church on Division Avenue, um, as Councilor Abbott already mentioned, Forest Park, South Avondale also meets tonight at six-thirty PM at the Avondale Library, the Wauhama Neighborhood Association will meet on Thursday at six PM at the Southern Museum of Flight, Gate City Neighborhood will meet on Monday, June ninth at four PM via conference call, if you, uh, would like to join that meeting, please contact my office for details, and Oak Ridge Park Neighborhood Association will also meet on Monday at six PM at the Harris Homes Recreation Center, uh, located at six hundred Brussels Circle, uh, other events, um, the Eastlake United, Eastlake United Methodist Church will host a Resource Fair on Saturday, June seventh, from ten to two PM, um, there will be several nonprofits on site offering resources and activities for kids, uh, the weekly Eastlake Farmers Market will als, also be happening from eight to twelve PM, uh, the Birmingham Public Library has kicked off registration for the summer re, reading program, more information is available by visiting your local library branch or online at www.cobpl dot org, um, on that topic, uh, we were also able to have the reopening of the Eastlake Library, uh, after being closed for several years, um, it, it is beautiful, um, it doesn't even smell like it's been closed up for several years, um, the staff, library staff did a lot of work cleaning and getting it, um, prepared for, uh, reopening, and, um, that building was built in nineteen twenty-eight, I believe, uh, so, historic building, you know, real asset to that community, um, historically and in terms of just being a general resource, uh, to the community, so, I'm happy to have that back open, and, uh, just wanted to also remind folks that we're one week closer to the Alabama State Games kicking off on Friday, June thirteenth at Legacy Arena, this will be the forty-second annual opening ceremony, thousands of athletes from around the state of Alabama will participate in this event, and all of the, uh, events are free and open to the public, if you want additional information, uh, about the event schedule, you can go to www dot alagames dot com, and we're also looking forward to the World Police and Fire Games that will be held Ju, June twenty-seventh through July sixth, and you can get that information on that event at www dot B H M twenty-two-five dot com, and that concludes my announcements. Mr. Clark, we have one person who signed up for, as a public speaker.
Is it Martha Wixen? Martha Wixen.
Alright, no longer with us, okay, um, want to thank our officers on duty, Officer Pinker and Officer Square, as always, thank you guys for watching over us this morning, and that brings us to the end of our meeting. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Meeting adjourned.
So, listen, we are out here at the Melanin Mala Project, and I have the pleasure of being here with Miss Addie Cool, please, tell us, what are we doing out here today?
We are doing the most, did you hear me, we've got families, we've got vendors, we've got the babies, we have yoga, we have nature, God has lifted the weather, so, we are in good weather conditions, and what the Melanin Mala is, is a really, it's a community event, it is, um, a space where, you know what I'm saying, the community comes together to, uh, be in harmony, to be in movement, mental health, right, and, um, some food, honey, you know, we love to eat, okay, and, uh, yeah, fellowship, right?
Yeah, yeah.
Right, right, right.
Listen, we have so many vendors out here that are, uh, bringing in their talents, their gifts, their skills, uh, we got somebody selling plants, we got somebody that's crocheting different, uh, fabrics, we got food out here, we got, you know, people, if you want some shea butter and some, you know, some, some body oils, uh, any jewelry, like, anything that you're looking for, you could find it right here, and it's such a great vibe, I'm so thankful that the weather is clear, uh, and we're about to get to some yoga, cuz that's what I'm excited about, so. Fourth year, it's the fourth year, um, and I know it takes a lot of work, a lot of dedication, a lot of passion to do what you're doing, and to do it four years in a row, man, it's a big deal, and so, thank you for the push-through, alright?
This year, we really wanted to make sure we had something for all the athletes in the city, and so, we came up with this idea, the summit, today, I really believe that you're gonna get some information that will change your trajectory of your life, but we're excited to have you, man, like, I, I really want y'all to understand that there's so many people rooting for you, there's so many people in this city and this community that wanna see you win, and we wanna make sure that you have all the skills, all the information, all the tools that you need to go as far as you possibly can, and so, uh, if you never hear it again, I want you to know that people in this city were pulling for you, we want you to win, and we're willing to invest in you.
Everybody tell me, what are the four major things that a coach needs to recruit you, repeat after me, highlight video, contact information, alright?
The important part is to realize that if you get a high ACT score early, you, your parents, nor your grandparents will have to take out student loans in order for you to go to school, right now, as soon as you sign, if you do not get a full scholarship, academically or athletically, you are on the hook for a hundred and eighty-seven thousand dollars in student loans, that's one thousand eight hundred and seventy dollars plus interest for the next thirty years of your life.
Out of Birmingham, Alabama, he's won nineteen stellar awards, he's pastor of one of the fastest growing churches in the country, he's my pastor, so, help me, stand to your feet, help me bring out Pastor Mike Junior.
I wanna encourage you because so many people don't realize, you always miss the shots that you don't take.
Well, I think it's important to get as many athletes in that are, that are doing the things that y'all wanna do, that are already there, man, achieving big goals often means making sacrifices, what is something that you've had to give up to achieve your goals?
Sure, as I got to college, um, I just sacrificed, uh, partying a lot, I didn't party, I only party when we won big games, um, now in the league, I sacrifice, uh, family time a lot, I only get like two and a half months off, but I trained all year long, uh, because this opportunity is, uh, very small, like, this is a very small part of my life, so.
Hey, what's up, everybody, Clinton Woods here, man, Birmingham City Council, we just finished up the first Magic City Showcase Athletes Summit, we were able to bring in about seven hundred Birmingham City Schools athletes and had, uh, some of the brightest minds, some of the best inspirational people pour into them, uh, really making sure that they're positioning themselves to take advantage of the opportunity that they have now, uh, college is a real opportunity to change the complete trajectory of your life, so, make sure you're taking advantage of it, we don't want anyone to miss the opportunity, so, amazing day pouring into these young minds, and so, we're hopeful, uh, that these seeds take root and that they change their life, and so, we're so excited, we wanna make sure we're investing in them anyway.